Yeah, I tried to follow your instructions. I read the memo and then the clean version, that's what I primarily focused on.
And so what Jody has on her table is that she has certain revisions that she needs to make to the rapid, yeah, I saw. You also saw her revision sheet, revision sheet doesn't appear. She wants to talk about some of the issues, I read the original document. It doesn't include anything in the original document, it's not on paper, you can talk about anything that's in there. But we only have an hour, it's our goal is to have an ordinance in twenty twenty to get it approved, because people are gonna start applying for licenses ASAP. You tell them what the rules are, these rules are changing, something has changed, so let's talk. Go straight to the revisions, or we can go page by page, you tell me what's the best approach.
Jody, since you did these revisions, maybe you should lead the conversation.
Alright, so do you want me to fight for the revisions, or should we go over, well first there's the fee structure, right?
That's kind of like at the back of the.
Okay.
But uh.
Okay. Um, so revisions that I kind of talked about in mind was um the clarify that admin, because I was confused, because it said like the penalties, right? Um, and then later it said that there was an admin penalty. And then Bob kind of made that sound that the admin penalty would be like, not the first penalty, but it could be like, you had six cars, you know, warning, but it still costs the town money to write the letter or make the phone call, so the admin fee would be for that. So he kind of just moved a little bit of that statement into the fees. So it's more of a, we don't always charge the admin fee, but we're gonna give like a warning instead of the first fee. That's how I understand it, which to me makes sense.
Yeah, with the larger part of the clarifications that we have in our toolbox for enforcement, a whole bunch of things, and they all apply. Not, and not one thing that's related to a specific violation. And if the violation is serious, for example, renting or doing a short term rental without a license, that's a big penalty, okay, so we have the ability to suspend somebody's license. Or excuse me, deny them a license, or if they have a license and they don't advertise correctly, suspend them. If those kind of regular, those kind of violations through the forefront, we have really strong tools to address that. But there are some small violations, like Jody mentioned, not the cars that may be parked on the property. Those are smaller, and the owner should be given a chance to perhaps pay administrative penalty, and know that they're on notice, that they can't do that in the future, and the more and more of those penalties that stack up, they may be subject to a larger penalty. So they'll revision merely to recognize the fact that we have all these tools and they all apply to a given situation.
Is it still three strikes and then there's?
There's still three strikes.
Like three fines, even if they're minor ones?
Yes.
It's considered a strike and then there's more serious.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, the next one was the period of ineligible, ineligible for short term rental license. There was um owners um convicted of the guilty to no contest of a violation or an offense, that so they should lose their license, it said for five years. And then the second one was owners that held the license and we revoked um their license because they didn't advertise or however, um, that one, and that one was three years. Well, one, the first one said five and the second one said three, and I think it just makes sense to make them both three years, right? Like the offenses are kind of the same, so to shorten the five year to the three year, to just be fair.
And these are the big penalties, these are people who are thumbing their nose at the town saying, I'm not gonna get a license, or I'm gonna operate when I'm suspended, or I'm gonna advertise incorrectly, tell people I've got twenty beds in the house, and they don't have the ability to park that many people in beds. Those kind of big violations come with support potential for you ineligible, once you've been, which you've been convicted or you plead no guilty, not guilty, or not, not contesting, have a ability to delay or make them ineligible for a license for a period of time. Jody raised the issue that it seems five years is an awful long period of time. You'll operate, if you're thumbing your nose at the town, you'll operate without, when you're suspended, without a license. And she's probably right, five years is a long time, so three years, you have to reduce that from five to three years.
Okay. Um, the other was um owner limited to one license, so um it, Bob had asked, you know, should we do that for twenty twenty six? My point was, we're almost in twenty twenty six. So they have been advertising for probably the whole year or longer, uh, they have reservations on the books. So to tell somebody they can't have more than one license in twenty twenty six is a little unfair, right? They're gonna lose money, we're gonna lose tax money, and it gives them a year to decide if they have three licenses, which one they wanna keep. And so that would mean that anybody who has more than one license now can keep the licenses up until they're renewable for twenty twenty seven. But it also would say that no one who doesn't currently hold a license cannot get two licenses now. Um, so basically, if you've never tried before, you still can't get two, and if you, and you had to, but you didn't apply for two, you can't. So it's only the people who had more than one license can renew this year only, and then that's it.
Next year too. So it means that, I said, say you go from, if you have three properties, next year it would be two, I'm sorry, two, twenty twenty seven it would be two.
Next year.
No, twenty twenty.
Basically, you got down to one.
Oh, so you wouldn't get that in between.
No.
No.
It's just you go from three to one.
You know, right, because they have.
They're expecting three, they're expecting three.
Twenty twenty seven, you only are allowed one.
Yeah, it's not like. Twenty twenty seven, everybody only gets one period.
Right, and that would be the same if it's a person who owns this house, but then they own this house and an LLC, and they own this one in a trust.
Right.
It doesn't matter if you're an owner of, it doesn't matter how it's named, it's if you're part of that.
All, all owners. All owners are named.
We don't have a ton of that currently, I know we have some for sure, but we don't have. Like it's not, I, I, I look around at you guys, but I know there are, for sure.
I'm your.
I'm just clarifying that we don't have like, there is not like twenty some people who are holding multiple licenses in our town, right?
I'm, I'm.
It's pretty small.
To me, at the.
It sounds like it's multiple, I, I know there's one over in Lake Shore.
Yeah.
But there's not, it's not like a huge, huge thing.
It's not like Johnny or Bo.
No, okay, cool.
But it tells us that they also approved the definition of holders.
Yeah, yeah, no, I like that part, for sure.
Yeah, we're just blabbering it now.
How, how do we verify that information? If LLC or organization applies to some nondescript name, are we as a certification process like researching the, who owns the LLC? Like how, how are we catching that?
Okay, that is not your question, that is not in the current regulation. Not us investigating who the, what they oftentimes call the majority owner of the LLC would be, and then calling them the owner. Um, we just have a pro, we set it as a prohibition to administer a pass, we do kind of research you're talking about, to go in and pick at every single ownership. The, the way this is set up is that we look on the assessor's website, and it lists you and your wife as the owner of the house. I mean, your wife is an owner and you're an owner, you can't hold a second license somewhere else, you can't go buy another house, she operates that one, you operate.
But you're both on the license that will be issued.
Yes.
Should you modify and get a, a license?
But you go on the Secretary of State's website and get the ownership.
You, you can't.
Or you could do like a liquor license, where you say, okay, if you're in corporate or whatever, open checking, you may should.
We can't, that's not any, part of the reason why I didn't put it in there is because that's a larger administrative step for us to go into that issue. If we don't have a whole lot of these corporate owners, then why would we pick at that issue right now? We can in the future, there are some more sophisticated communities that have the staff to go and look into every single corporate ownership and say, no, you can't, you can't have one, you can't have one. We don't have the problem, I left it out for now. If you think it will be a problem that someone will start creating LLCs that own multiple units in the, in the community, we can go ahead and add to that, especially next year, add to that next year that we will test your ownership for, for a legal entity like a LLC.
Well, how do we know, how, I mean, how do we know? How do we know if it's, if it's an LLC or a trust or wherever, if they own multiple? I mean, what if they own, what if they make several different trusts or LLCs? Then you're talking about going to the state, do that research and.
Because when I create an LLC, I identify the owner.
So that identifies.
If I create two, I've got the owners, and so I may show up on multiple LLCs as the.
Okay, I guess my question was more along the lines of my brain fog this page. How do we know if that's happening?
You don't unless you research.
So I suppose that we might recognize a trend, right? If we see the, uh, a lot of applications are coming in uh with LLC names on them, right? Maybe in the neighborhood, I think that would be indicative of us that, that, you know, we could pursue that, right? And that's something we can always do, right? We can do the research.
But that's not prohibited, because it's so quick to get on the state, Secretary of State's website.
So we're not stopping the town from going, we're just not requiring the town.
No. Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
So if the board asks in the future for a town manager to go do the research, we, that's, there was a suspicion that they were doing that, that's not an appropriate thing. We can just be like, hey, you know, this LLC, can we research?
You can just pull that one's.
Yeah, 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 for sure, yeah.
Uh huh.
Not all, not all LLCs are registered in the state.
Yeah.
So, yeah, but can I clarify something on this? I thought what I read is that our ordinance covers LLCs for same ownerships too, it's in that. And that really the intent of this is no property, you could more own as many properties as you want, but same owner, whether it's an LLC, a trust, husband, wife, you can only have one rental license.
Yes, right.
It's just, what are we gonna do administratively? We're not really going down that rabbit hole of we're gonna research all the LLCs out there. Because a lot of people in those day are now converting after they get their property to LLC or trying. So I just want to make sure the intent is, if you, you have multiple properties, doesn't matter how it's titled, you're an owner in that, in that entity or that property, you cannot have more than one license.
You were, you had to be right up to the last statement, let me walk back. Johnson LLC has two properties in town, the Johnson LLC can only have one license, the same legal entity. If Johnson LLC one and Johnson LLC two, if you start doing that with LLCs and people can't do that, each of those LLCs, different names or differently interested, who own multiple licenses. That's not addressed in this ordinance, we want to address that, we can add that.
I think we shouldn't.
It's an additional step for us to go and check into that, especially if they're not registered in the state.
Correct. Well, since we're probably the most flexible community in this county, county with regard to short term rentals, I do think people that really do have that intent, run their homes, are gonna find loopholes and they're gonna be clever about it. I think if you're a principal in any entity, or you're married to a principal, that you're only allowed one license.
Okay, so the way it's commonly done in other communities is they, they find you're a majority owner of the LLC, because you might have, you have your wife, your kids, and, and you all have, they have small interests, but you're the majority owner. And, and that does happen, so if you, well, eighty one percent of this, fifty four percent of the other LLC, you're only one license. It's tough to pick this one apart.
I think, yeah, but that is, Bob, it seems to me that if you're a member, whether you're a hundred fifty percent, twenty five percent, normally you don't see percentages, I mean, does that mean the president of a, of an LLC or a corporation is more, is more qualified to have a license or than the vice president? I just, I don't think, if you, if you're involved in any entity or ownership, you're part of it, I don't think that you're allowed one license, that's it.
Yeah, so what you're proposing, we can do, it requires us to, when that application comes in for the Johnson LLC, to get the documents that created the LLC and, and identify every single owner in that LLC, and only, none of those people listed can have a license, have more than one license.
Can we make the person who's applying provide that information?
Yes, yes. And then lastly, how would you change your application process? Identify the, the owners of the corporation.
All of them.
So I, I'm not, I'm with Barry, I think Barry, sorry.
Alright, so.
Anyway, so if I understand correctly, you want to go into that realm now?
I just want it to be in there, like Jody and some other people mentioned, we may not enforce everything, but having it in there, or it may not be possible to enforce it, but having it in there gives, if we see something suspicious, and there's these multiple violations going on, these two homes owned by two different entities, that we can dig into it at that time. But it's in our ordinance, it says if, you know, it covers our bases, if you say, no, you can't do that, because you've got the same person involved in this entity and the same person in this entity, you can only have one license.
Right.
Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, anybody could buy, could claim something to another maid and, you know, but this kind of distract, like takes it away a little bit, right? And also it would be their advertising, if they say, this is, you know, my house, this house is right next door to this other house that sleeps ten people. Like you wouldn't be able to put that in your advertising, because that's, you know, sharing house, basically, right? So it just, it'll distract, there, there's always a loophole through this, for sure.
But don't you think we should have the right, put the teeth in?
Yeah.
So if we want to research it, it's clear what our intent is, we don't want the same people owning multiple, I mean, they could own multiple properties, we just don't want them short term renting this business, right?
If that's, not even his, we're not gonna add that to the ordinance when it comes back to moving.
Yeah, I like the fact that they would have to provide the information to, to the town, so if the town doesn't have a chasing. I think if you're an LLC requesting a short term rental license, you need to provide your ownership documents, I think that's more than fair. What would you do with a trust too, or is that easier to?
A trust normally has the husband or wife's name typically, but from what I've seen, on the trust. We'll poke that one.
Okay, cool.
Before you, may I quote town, or?
Yeah.
On to that again, there's two other types, we may not be able to address them all, I thought of one while we're here, what happens if mom and dad own a property, and daughter and her husband own a property, son and, you know, his partner, whatever, own a property, and then they, they have two short term license, they should be able to have two short term licenses, because they're now two different families. But they're combining the, they, let's say they're right next to each other, and they are combining the rental that comes in, let's say you've got two families, two groups that rent those two houses, because this, the son and his partner and mom and dad, they, they collaborate, say, I got this rental, and they go, gosh, you can only put six people in your house, well, the kid's got a place next door, and they can put eight people in that house. And so they put, bring in the ones together, and I guess really you can't maybe cover every base, but I can certainly see that.
I think at the end of the day, we didn't have anything before, this puts something on the table, right, for us to do, and, and as we go along, well, we're gonna see things, maybe, and we'll correct it at that, I think we just need something by November, so that we can, so we can have these tools in place. Um, and, and yeah, I mean, there's gonna be ways around it regardless, but hopefully there won't be, because if we increase our fee structure, increase our fine structure, making these mistakes of having a party, right, at your house, uh, is a fifteen hundred dollar fine or however, wherever you're at in the fee structure, um, you know, it's gonna be a big penalty, so I would imagine not advertising that way and having the fee structure and having possibly your license being pulled for three years, I would imagine, we're gonna see a decrease if that happens.
Well, that, when, when that situation came up in Lake Shore, that would take me by surprise. I wasn't aware that that kind of stuff was going on, so it really concerned me, because I don't think that's the spirit of only a second home in short term.
Yeah. Right.
Of running businesses in our community is what we're about, I don't think.
Yeah, I would agree.
And so the other one I thought about, do nothing or something, is that there's people, and it's, uh, businesses actually buying homes, which is, there's not a problem with that, but they, they're a club membership, and they have inventory of properties in the club. You join the club, and you can pick between all these different properties within the club. So you're, they're not renting it on a certain platform, it's only, it's exclusive to that club.
Is that considered a short term rental? I'm just, I have no idea.
I don't know. I was just saying, we could run into the same problems.
And it's not as, so, and, from bottom to bottom, like, it's not a short term rental, any, we haven't written, I, I'm not aware of anybody who's written in their regulations that, like, that layer of testing on the show, on these clubs that we're talking about, time shifts.
Eh, well, you know what, have you ever seen those club memberships?
Yeah. I don't, yeah, but I don't think, we don't have that currently.
Oh, I know some in Breckenridge.
In Breckenridge, but in Blue River, I don't think you currently have that.
I didn't think we had that one either. So I'm just saying, I'm glad we're trying to get ahead of this, and I'm just throwing it out there, maybe we just start recognizing the complaints and see, digging with people when they happen, and see what they're dubbed to. And address it at that.
No, I agree with you, I think that like, that's a good point to bring up, there's the clubs, I also don't, as a smaller town, I don't know how progressive I'm gonna get with laws on short term rentals, because if we do go off of these clubs and we're the first ones to do it, we could also be facing the legal ramifications of being the first. How many times Breckenridge gets in?
Once I know of.
It's like two or three at this one, I'm pretty sure, and they keep getting.
Were they won?
Yeah, they keep winning, which is great. Just winning's not always free.
I'm not missing your point.
I'm getting people to write short term rentals.
Oh, yeah.
What I don't like is when people come in and do it as a business, or at any time, and they're disrupting the neighbors. That's my intent, is let's make this nice community for everyone, but some of these companies that come in and do this stuff, they have no regard for the community, it's a business. And.
A hundred percent.
So anyway, that's enough on that.
I think we go with what we did just.
Yeah, I, I don't want to go too deep.
No, I don't either, I think that, I think putting anything that we can actually enforce, this is gonna be enforceable, correct, because my, my biggest issue with a lot of what we've had is enforcement doesn't feel like it was enforceable. And I want to make sure that anything we do, not only can be, but will be enforced moving forward. Because that's my biggest issue with a lot of like, what we've done in the past, and it feels like what was happening wasn't being enforced or couldn't be enforced. And I just want to make sure that anything we're doing is enforceable, because I'd rather start with some bigger picture rules, and if we need to focus on them, focus more, but at least starting with something we can enforce.
This is.
This ordinance, as it's been revised, with significant revision to it, is more enforceable than our previous setup. Whether you enforce it or not is the next question, right? If you have the tool, you have the ability, but if you don't go out there and find the violation and pursue the violation. Yeah, got you, right, that's what this.
Are you in or?
No, it's all good. Uh, the other one was just to confirm overnight occupancy, which is our new night hours or quiet hours from nine PM to seven AM is limited to two people per bedroom plus two people. Um, and which kind of brings up to the next one, in the first one, my, kind of my biggest ache on it was the total occupancy, that it said you could do plus ten during daytime use, so for me, that goes against, you know, if there's a three bedroom house, and that occupancy is eight, if you say plus ten, we're doubling the occupancy, and most of these houses aren't well septic, and that, and there's a reason that you can only have that much, many occupants in the room, because you don't, you well, won't handle it or the septic, and even if you're on sewer, it's so, you know. So anyway, my point was like, I would like to see plus two at, or plus four are they max? I'm going plus two, but you know, plus four is fine, but I don't like plus ten, I think that's just too much, it's a strain on neighbors, it's a strain on our water, um, and, and probably a lot of other things. And also, plus ten doubles the occupancy of a three bedroom house, that's, to me, that's a party.
Well, I'm glad you brought it up, I, I, that was in my notes too, and, and I'm a little bit, I'm more confused on it. It sounds like you understand it more than I do, I don't understand the plus ten, I understand two people per bedroom plus two more. So if you have a three bedroom, that's six people, plus two more is eight total in the house, the plus ten, I don't understand that.
The, the, the plus ten is used in some other communities to identify that level, which is just unreasonable, and it's easy to turn, there are way too many people. The concern I have with dropping down, I'm not saying ten is the right number, I think four is a good one. The problem I'm having is that if I have uh six, two, two, you have two per bedroom, two bedrooms and two extra, and two more people come by for breakfast before we go skiing, I'm in violation of the ordinance, we're using two. And that's not a party, that's just people coming by, or to come by and play cards, that's not a party, ten is a party. Some number between two and ten makes perfect sense, I think four is fine. The issue would maybe be one of which, what we call spite owners next door may say, I know they, they have, they're allowed six, and I saw extra people there, it wasn't ten, it was four, so I called the town, I want to come out and force against four people who come by to pick up skis and have breakfast. So we're, the point at which it kind of gets a little too difficult to enforce, ten's easy, because you know it's a party event, but there's some number in there, and that's what the ordinance is asking you to do, where is, where do you feel comfortable? Where do you feel comfortable saying, you're allowed six, or you're allowed eight, or you're allowed four in that house under our current regulations? How many extra people from the hours of seven AM to ten PM are too many people? So ninety, two ninety.
So to make sure I understand, the plus ten, it means people that are visiting, not staying, no?
Yeah, so like, I only think this is a demo, I mean, it's just someone who does some Airbnb. A lot of times, because mine is so small, people are staying there to go visit their family. So basically, we're saying like, if, you know, like my family came to visit and rented the house across the street from me, because then I'd be, then I'd be allowed to go over there and visit and have breakfast, if it's two people, if me, you know, my girlfriend and my kid go over there, then we're in violation. So I do think that two is probably smaller than I would like to see. But I do think that there is a number that I would like to see put on, I don't just see an issue with that, but I do think that two is probably more restrictive than I would be comfortable with.
Four.
I first went with zero.
No visitors.
Right, we should, Jody, where you are here.
I did that, so it's during the day, during the time, during the day.
And these are visitors, people that just come.
They're not spending the night.
Right, I mean.
This is what we're talking about, we're talking about visitors, I, and I'm not, I'm.
The well and the septic though on these houses are not meant for plus six, and the, and it's the turnover, right? It's not, it's, there's more turnover in, you know, we might have six people over, but maybe once a month, once every two months, you know, if you have somebody every weekend having plus six, plus eight, to me, you're dwindling our resources.
It's kind of, I don't disagree with you, Jody, if that was happening all the time, I just don't think it's gonna happen a lot, I think when people rent a house, it's that family, they don't have friends or.
I think it's not happening in our neighborhood, it's happening in that neighborhood, yeah.
But we. Lake Shore live. That's what, because they've got multiple homes being like the same first name.
Well, yeah, and it's from, nevermind.
Party, I'm sorry.
Uh, so whatever the number is, to me, we should, we need to come up with a reasonable number.
Yeah, you said this happens across from you, what did you think's reasonable?
I, I mean, I'm not, I, I don't know, I just, I just don't think two is the number, I don't know, ten, I don't think ten's the number. Somewhere in there, there is a number. Anyone else have?
I was just thinking two families, two adults.
You're four?
Four, five is probably.
Comfortable with four, that's a comfortable, I know that, and I know that you may not be as comfortable as four, you're saying eight.
I'm, I'm, you know what, I think two's a little too small.
I do, I do believe two is, it's my humble opinion.
Uh, you know, I, I, I would think somewhere six, eight might be a little more reasonable, but four might be more. But whatever you guys.
It's a mom.
The biggest one, the biggest one as well at septic is if we blow up a septic system and can't manage something.
If it was happening all the time.
Well, it's the neighborhood, you know, they mean, you put ten in a three bedroom house, it's a party. Plus the eight that are already there, you have eighteen people, to me, that's a party, right? You put four in, you're having breakfast, you're having lunch, you're playing cards, you're hanging out with friends, you're not.
I think that.
Getting wild.
You're gonna strain the septic system, right, when it's a full time thing going on.
Maybe you are.
I do think.
Not gonna strain it for a weekend or a day.
Right, right, for sure, but I think what you're always saying is, it's not a weekend or a day, right? It's this weekend, and then it's Tuesday through Thursday, and then it's this weekend, and then it's Tuesday through Thursday, right? And it, some of these rentals, right, where you, you might get a two month stretch where it could be every day. And that might not last for three hundred sixty five days, but I could see, you know, going through the month of halfway through December and well into January, but it would be, that could be an issue.
I could see it maybe happening more in summer, because when.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, so I think it would sound like a majority are comfortable with four, right? Does that kind of put the dialogue in? If that's what, I heard four, if you guys say four. So I think that that's probably where the direction we would like to go, is that, if that's fair, I think that's the, just because it is the majority.
That's fine, okay, so, since you're on that number of people, I felt the, the maximum, like it goes up to ten people maximum in a house? I thought I saw that in the ordinance.
So, there's, there's an overnight occupancy limit, right? Overnight after the hour of nine PM, you can only have two people per bedroom plus two.
But I thought I saw somewhere that's like ten max.
And. That's what we were just talking about, so there was a proposal for the total occupancy limit, literally in the daytime, that limit to be two people per bedroom plus ten, and so we, we discussed that back down to four, so you can forget the ten now.
I thought I saw somewhere else that overnight occupancy was maxed out.
That's what we were just talking about.
No, this is plus ten for visiting.
This is all for visiting.
This is all, there, this is the only plus ten there is.
Okay, I'll go back through this, I thought I saw somewhere else, because I was gonna say, a five bedroom would be twelve.
Like, no, it would be twelve, but two times five plus two.
But say.
And that legally.
Right. I thought I saw somewhere in the ordinance that would ten max.
I thought it was. So during the daytime, it would be, it would be ten people plus two for a five bedroom house, plus four if they invited them over for breakfast.
Right. I understand that, I just thought for overnight. I understand that. I just thought for overnight, it's at ten max.
They're the only max for overnight that I'm aware of, the car thing, which is five per.
Five out of garage.
We'll get to that. But real quick, I don't, I don't. Jody raised a really good point about capacity of utilities for a home. Right now, we have the ability to look into a home and and ask around, ask the providers, what is the maximum you think can be served by the house? And we have the ability to to reduce the number of people who can be in that house in that short term run. We have that today, we had it before, but we had to go do the research. In the future, Jody and I communicated about, we should probably do a certification program where if I didn't get a license, I gotta go to the service provider and get a certificate from them that I can put the number of people in the home that I plan to put in there to, plus to keep it.
Are we talking?
And if I can't get that certification, they will say no, and we will say no based upon that certification. And they'll pay the utility provider for that research instead of that with us.
So like, for example, I'd have to go to Snowbridge?
Yes.
Or Black Cat?
Yeah, yeah, so I just, you just talk about, because we, I can't go to the sewer company and be like, hey, or Topper Blue and be like, how many people in my house?
No, you wouldn't, you just go and say, I, when the town allows, we have two per bedroom plus two. Is that okay? Is that okay with you? Or is my capacity lower? And if they say it's okay with them, then they'll say, they'll check off the box and they'll have to come back to us. If they say no, our capacity for your particular property, you know, whatever happens to be in there in cooperation with the scheme is limited to less than you think than the town would give you in the short term. We'll get that information back from them and we would limit the license at that time.
And that would be probably something to look at next year, because we don't have time this year. But uh, just for Chiefy County and Hart County both require anyone applying for a short term rental to get a well permit and a type of usage that's allowed when they apply. So that's part of their application process. So that's where I'd like to go in the future, because if you're, if you're well and you're and your septic really only uh is six, right? There's no plus two on the sofa, slipper, you're just six.
There's. Just to clarify.
However, you know, it is, so I think going forward, that's something we can add and we just don't have time this year.
Yeah, um, as far as use on wells.
Yeah.
There is no amount of people. It's the how you use the water. Domestic use is for in-house only. Household use, sorry, household use is in-house domestic only. Can't wash your car, but can't fill your hot tub.
Sure.
Uh, domestic is, you can have up to an acre of water, you can uh, you can have two other, or you can um irrigate. Yeah, irrigate, wash your car, fill your hot tub. But there's no thing in the state water law that says you, it's limited to the amount of people. Water.
Yeah, big gallons per minute.
What's that?
Pretty big gallons per minute, based on the type of.
Think of an old one like mine.
Yeah, it's, I will actually put me in the top of the process.
You bring in the water before, so.
I get it, but now the eyes of the septic and.
All the.
But it took, you know, the set of the environmental health laws and the sanitation district do limit the amount, like your tap fees for the number of uh bedrooms, not bathrooms. And same with environmental health. And um, they do regulate that. I don't know, I thought it was for people living there, not people visiting. That they would say, okay, you've got a septic system that's for a three bedroom house. You had twelve people visit this weekend. That's against our requirement. You can't do that. I've never heard that one, but.
The complexity of the issue, it's too big for us to solve it in the next two months, you know? Number two, I really want us to push the the obligation to give us a number of the utility provider, then I mean, us set the number. If we set the number and the owner objects, we're the one in conflict with the owner over how we determine the number. If the utility provider comes back with a form and says they can only have four people, they'll, they're contest, they're conflict with the utility company, not with us. And that's a program we can install next year, which is we don't have to, we don't have.
Yeah, I like looking at it as to.
Any utility that that has a limitation upon use of uh sewer water.
I just don't think you're gonna get that number from utility companies.
And so we'll figure out a way to get closer to what Jody's arguing, which is these uses have an environmental impact upon the community where we do assess.
I do like looking, in the future, I do agree, where there's no way in the next two months where you're making that happen. So let's, I think, try to focus it on the what we can make happen before. Because you know, we are in time of like disaster now.
Do you have more, don't you?
Nope. That's it.
Car, car, can we tell you about cars?
Oh, let's talk about cars. Yeah, sorry, I did.
Big change in the order, big change in the ordinance is the number of cars that you're allowed to have on your property. Regardless of how many bedrooms you have, the number of people that you have the ability to house overnight in your short term rental. The ordinance sets to a number, the same number that everybody else in the town has to live up to, which is five cars total.
Yep.
Outside. Out, off, off the right way.
Only you have two in the garage, but five outside.
Outside, right, two in the garage, you have three car garage, you have three, but outside, five cars maximum.
That's good.
And when they get their license, they have to, when they apply for the license, they have to show us where that parking area is going to be. They can't just park them on the rough area of property.
We do that now with the parking area. Yeah, I drove my.
Enforce.
Enforce, this is where I get back to enforcement, it's like, I'm all about this five car rule, but the party house cross from my house.
But you gotta have spaces to do it, right?
I mean. Yeah, they get creative, oh, they get creative. They say they are not in that driveway.
It is driveway.
I I just have to park my driveway multiple times. They're not the driveway, it's my responsibility to park my driveway. I learned that.
Which is interesting.
So is it rare for people that can't? They can't. So so it's not the same as UPZ, when we go through and they have to have.
It's a basis, different states that we can design a house and put a house in the ground, it's different.
And at the end of the day, there were more changes. Uh, but those were the only ones that it made, or I wanted just to tweak a little bit. The other ones all seemed very fair to me and I, and there was a lot more that went into it that we didn't have before. So thank you for all the work that went into that, because it makes me happy that we have something new to offer now.
And I'd like to start at the beginning, first quarter of next year, putting some of these extra stuff in there we've talked about. Um, because that's the time to do it, well ahead of the rental season. Because there is a fairness aspect to these people who have purchased homes in the short term. Allaying them knowing ahead of time what the limitations are going to be, not two months before they, or one month before they send the application. But it is, Jody pointed out, that's ten.
It's reasonable.
Well, I I agree, I mean, that's really their money making system.
Well, it's just not reasonable. It's a big deal, those people, right?
Mm-hmm.
If I have to add. Good, may I ask, or just for clarification, I meant, I read one of the things, this was regarding fire pits and fire tables. It said fire pits uh are prohibited. I wouldn't mind it, because I think the intent here is no wood burning, anything outside. On a short term, it, no wood burn.
That that would be true.
So.
Because fire tables have to be powered by gas.
Yeah, that's right. I think that's the intent and I think that's good.
That's like, that's a definitely.
So what I was thinking is if you have fire pits or any outdoor fires fueled by wood are prohibited. So just to make it clear, we don't want any wood burning outside the house if you're short term. And you go into more explanation on the, what what a fire pit is, it's a mobile, gas burning, elevated on a hard surface, that kind of, which is great.
Yeah.
You know, that was, I just.
Six, four, and seven. Six, four, and seven. No, it's six, one, one dash one, one two, that's three. I see six dash.
Does anyone have any other questions on any of the other?
Dash one, dash seven.
Other rules, we're gonna, like, the fact. And I got, I have a question for the standard, the town, I guess. I would like to see some sort of like worst of plan, create the songs, the new rules. Because again, again, my biggest concern is that we've had rules and they haven't been enforced. And I know that I've been talking with the chief, that there's some, who's enforcing them and how we're gonna do that. I would like to see something based upon that. Just so that we're, that the public and us are aware of how it's going to be enforced, because that's, I guess, my biggest frustration with what's happened with short rentals in general. So I don't know exactly how that looks, but I think that would be a good thing to see. I would like to see how we plan on facilitating these rules and how we.
Are we gonna do a complaint base? Are we gonna do random enforcement, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, no, a hundred percent. I just wanna know, like, have the, are the police gonna be going, are they hearing the car thing or are we gonna hire someone? Like, what, will we, do we need to move forward? To make sure that when our complaints, they're not just going nowhere, because it felt like maybe in the past, that was a big issue, the complaint may have not been going in. Uh, that frustrates me to no end.
Yeah.
So just having kind of like, I guess, a a game plan going forward of how we're gonna facilitate these new rules and, you know, who's in charge here. One of them's walking in the room right now. Royal Grand Help, thank you.
I think what we could do is appoint one of you to be the complaint receiver.
Maybe. Wrong time. Yeah, he doesn't.
He does not show up for a meeting, John.
Congratulations.
Did you want to talk about?
Yes, you did.
Okay, so the new fee structure, uh, a new license, if you've never had one before, is three hundred dollars per year. Renewing your license, two hundred dollars, it's gonna be three hundred dollars per bedroom. Um, and then the late renewal fee as well. And it also doesn't matter when you really have your license. You could, if you get a license in December, it's still gonna expire December thirty first, so you have to pay it again. So you, you can decide midway through the year you're going to rent, doesn't matter the fee structure, so it's the same regardless. So I just an example, like a a new license for a three bedroom is twelve hundred dollars fee, renewal eleven hundred dollars.
And on top of that, like other communities, like annual fee that you pay to go into things like enforcement. It's not, you're paying another, the impacts created by your unit with your renewal or with your new license application, it's an application. But you're also paying an annual fee for every year that you have an S T R. That's an annual fee that goes to the administration of the entire program. And that's permitted, that's law by law, a lot of communities do that. We have not done that. We've let our application fee carry the cost of the program and it was way underfunded. Law lets us apply a higher standard for payment of fees to cover our costs. So we're doing it by application fee. We're doing it by annual S T R.
And you think that covers, also that was kind of right in there was maybe the hiring of somebody else or something else with the tools we needed to.
Yeah, like the software and stuff to.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I don't have any visiting, but.
Well, I I just had one concern was the the late renewal for two thousand twenty six is gonna be really difficult, because you're saying it's late after December third first, but you're not gonna be approving those regulations until the third week of November. We barely have been able to generate what we think are reasonable application processes and stuff like that. So I don't know if for the first year, if you wanna forget that or you put it to January fifteenth or whatever, because I don't anticipate the police to talk for a job if we'll get that stuff rolling out of here until the third, fourth week of November. And we wrote that into the work.
We did.
Here's how it's written, in fact, he has, and the manager has the authority to essentially waive that late application fee for just cause. Just cause would be, we didn't get our letting here, you know, interacting here. So that's, you have that flexibility on this year. So as opposed to changing the ordinance, it will always be in the future, December one, get your application.
Well, I don't have a problem with that for some.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with the new, I actually like the new, these, I do think important that we're at least subsidizing this for from the owners of these properties and not putting it on the people who are.
I like the re, I like the the fee structure by resolution, instead of burying it inside the ordinance in different places and different numbers and everything might change and you gotta do a whole new difference, right? This allows us to very quickly change fees during the year, right? We need to. Um, and it's all in one place. So we posted on the internet, people can say, what are the fees of S T Rs? They have them all on a list, in the post, to have a dig through it. Right? So it's a much cleaner way of administering.
Yeah, I think it's, it's super straight away. It's easy to understand. Does anyone have any issues with that? Anyone? Yeah.
So then what would happen next is at the next meeting, there would be, you break us out the ordinance and we need to pass it as is. They'll probably, we won't have time to make changes. So if anybody has any changes, you have to voice them out.
We got a lot of home. Please, can I get language together, please?
Yes.
Leadership issue, I'll get that out ahead.
Okay.
Well, ahead of time. So if you see it and you don't understand it or you wanna massage it, call me, please. Joey's really good about getting on the horn when you're emailing him and saying, I wanna talk about this. That's why she's leading this conversation.
That's what I'm doing.
You wanna. And all of it. So, uh, we'll, we'll get your language back. It comes back as an ordinance, right? It'll have a new corporate stuff into that ordinance and it'll have a resolution reapproved after the ordinance. And then you're done. What happens is under what we call the pending ordinance doctrine, is a legal concept in the law. And we're allowed to start applying ordinance that we drafted before it's approved. So he has the, the manager has the ability to start using the ordinance now and be processing it.
Except for.
Yeah, that's, that's moved like that, so.
But this is, this is one of your major priorities that we talked about in workshop.
A hundred percent.
Thanks for putting the other.
All right. Anything else on this? Because as we said, we're gonna have to add comments quick next month. So we just need to make sure that everyone's on the same page.
Nine to seven quiet rules definitely.
Yeah.
I was gonna be, that is that.
Twice there. Nine to seven or daytime seven to not, so it's a. Yeah.
We're almost, we're almost on the one hundred.
What, are you, are you taking a break then till the regular meeting?
We usually just go, we can take a five minute break and then usually we just go back into the regular meeting.
So I don't know if you're taking observations and questions now about the work session or whether you wanna wait till.
We'll probably just wait, we literally, we're gonna, if we take a five minute break, that's five max, then we're gonna go straight in. Does anyone need a break? Or we just wanna guys just wanna keep going? Okay, cool. We'll just go straight in, because it's, we'll improve one thing and then, and see you guys.
All right.
All right, so next, to approve the constant agenda from last, uh, I first.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, a second. All those in favor?
I.
I.
All right, so that is passed.
Who did the second, please?
Oh, I did, sorry. All right, um. Does anyone like to speak with the board or have some comments for the one? How's it going?
Hi, fun, how are you guys? Thanks so much. This is really great news to know that there's so many of the questions and concerns being addressed and everybody's taking it so seriously in detail. Um, just, I, I'm a fan of corporate identity and and one of the great things about Colorado is you don't get to find out who owns it. All you get to see in the state is the registered agent or maybe the person forming it. So you'll never know from looking anything up who really are the owners. The I R S recently started trying to do that with beneficial ownership. Those of you who have L C's know that and kind of got tanked, but it um, it's difficult. You can ask it though, and you certainly can ask for articles of formation and who the members are, you can say if they changed them, which they could do the next day, that they have to notify you and people are gonna lie and cheat, they're gonna do it. If you catch them, you can revoke their license. So I think it's in the right direction. I just, I I sympathize with trying to really monitor this. But making it a rule doesn't mean that you shouldn't try. Um, it, the three strikes thing, I I'm still a bit, you know, at a loss. I I think you're on the right track, trying to figure out enforcement of this. But I, I don't know, I know we have complained, I know there have been pretty good violations going on in our neighborhood. I don't know today where those records are kept. I I don't know if I ask, who to ask. And I could make up again, I said this last time, a public records request, that's a lot of nonsense for Robert and other staff to deal with. But I, that's really part of it too. It's, it's that you know that you have a pa, a path, a process, folks, with the owners who wanna know if they have a hearing, if this is what happens. I get my rights to, you know, the process, but also that we track it somewhere and that it's in a, somewhere in the system as we grow that it's, you know, subject to public review. Once somebody is violated, I mean, you know, I wanna know, I can find out. If that counted, but where does that count? And it doesn't count unless it's a part of this process. So I really, again, wanna focus on that as you get into your next phase of this. Um, I think that's it. I loved what I heard otherwise and I don't believe I'm. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks, y'all. Um, Dan Cleary, you're awesome. Um, I came in a few minutes late, so I don't know if you addressed any minimal night stay. Uh, as part of the packet, we can't really see the uh work session items. I would encourage the board to consider it, because if we're talking about water and sewer, you know, if you're gonna turn over a short term rental, the cleaning crew, water usage, you know, if if they're cleaning laundry on site, it's happening. Like if you do a one night stay or a two night stay, that's pretty intensive use. Um, so it's maybe worth taking a look. I know you said you can't do it this year, but I would say that, you know, it's probably, if you're gonna require anything. I think I agree, and I thought I heard Barry say it, so trust me. I think I agree, and I thought I heard Barry say it, no, trust me, um, Stimson, that, uh, you're not gonna get any information on wells, and I would agree, right? But a simple call to environmental health will tell you what they're allowed to have, right? So two plus, two per bedroom plus two on a house that's on sewer is probably fine. But that said, it's my understanding that the Upper Blue Sand District charges more for those that have short term rental licenses. I don't have one, so I'm not, I don't know, I cannot confirm that, that I've installed that on more than one occasion. So A, there's obviously more use in their eyes, right? Uh, B, environmental health, I don't believe recognizes two per bedroom plus two. So we might wanna consider two per bedroom. And whether you go with four as a daytime visitor, that's really up to you. Uh, but I think that two per bedroom plus two on a septic, the reality is, you know, that, having a box to check, and I don't think that's really difficult to accomplish in a month. But that I'm not doing a look, so I can't say, but a box checked to say, does environmental health approve? Or are you on onsite wastewater or sewer? And if on onsite wastewater, you know, does environmental health approve you for your, your intended use? Because the reality is, is that if they don't, like if, if my house was built as a two bedroom, I have a thousand gallon tank. So the field is based on that, and so it can only absorb so much water in a given period of time. I believe when my house was built in nineteen seventy seven, it was sixty gallons per person. Today, I believe it's seventy five gallons per person, and I believe that, so that equates to roughly a hundred fifty gallons per, per bedroom. So that would be about three hundred gallons a, a day in use, or excuse me, GPS, so. But a tank can only spill so much in a day, and if that's forty or fifty percent, that means you can spill four hundred gallons of a thousand gallon tank in a day. So again, all these calculations, environmental health knows them like the back of their hand, and Dan Hendershot's gonna have a pretty strong opinion on. So that's probably the most important thing, right? Is how many people can really fit them, cause we don't wanna contaminate the water. So, um, I think you're on the right track, but I, I would encourage if you can to try to put those boxes in this year. Because if an upper blue thinks it's more intense use, then it's more intense use and they're charging more. And you know, when you talk about justifying the fees, I think I mentioned it last month, but there is more use on your staff and our roads. And things that really you're not gonna calculate, you're calculating things that are, you know, directly related, but the indirect costs. You know, are we, are we just writing that off to the extra taxes we're taking in? Maybe, but you, you can probably justify whatever you think you need, but I think minimum night stay is important. Because a lot of these short term rentals, if they're not booked, they're dumping them, they're like, man, whatever, cause I don't pay the cleaning fee, right? So the, the guest is gonna pay it, so you put it out there for one night, if you better to bring in whatever you can bring in at a discounted rate. So just something to think about, I appreciate you guys as effort on this, it's nice that, I think it's really good dialogue, one of the better work sessions that I've ever seen. So it was extremely productive, um, and I, yeah, I commend you all, so thank you.
Thanks again for letting us speak on this, I appreciate your build of the. Dumbma plus hostile Chris Allen, zero four six one, make sure we dumbma plus one on Dan's comments about minimum stays. We are certainly starting to see that in our regular break, maybe that's a, something for down the line, so. Or now, love to you, but we certainly see very, very quick turnover of just two nights with the cleaning crew coming and going and all the question. I'm a plus one here, um, my, my, uh, my experience with municipal regulations is a little dated, so I'm not sure if this is a first reading, second reading, public hearing kind of things.
Statutory tab, we have one.
Is that a public hearing?
So.
Okay.
Will be.
Good, I'm not, I'll make a point to being here, cause you're gonna get some pushback. You're gonna get some pushback, and I wanna be here to defend your actions and your thoughtfulness and all this, so that'll be the, the, the weekend of November.
Next one, yeah, terrific.
Also went on bar, and I was talking to the bar, I'm barred.
You can say, I, I pretty much answered your most.
Very much appreciate your comments on, uh, on wood burning, uh, fire pits and outside. And, and, um, appreciation of Bob's policy of pushing it back to the providers. I believe that twelve months out of the year, if you have one of those things, you gotta get a appeal from Redwater. So that may be a way to kinda push it back to the, the utility of, of jurisdiction in that regard, so it doesn't all come back to us. Um, my wife is concerned about, and I'm concerned about unattended, uh, fire tables as well, I didn't quite know where that discussion is going. Um, whether anything's being done in that regard, but for the place next to us at two thirty one, there have been parties over there, the outdoor deck. You've seen, um, the outdoor deck sits twenty five people, and then the parties over there where they've been roasted marshmallows over a, over a fire table outside. With tons, tons of burnt marshmallow ash going up, being cut by the wind and blowing into the, the dry weeds that are around our property. Because of the, the drought, and so I don't know where that stands, Joey, is if that's in, in the, um, there have been discussions, but just one, one other thing to bring up. And I really hope that, um, it doesn't need to be in the ordinance, I can imagine, but I really hope that there is an intermediary, um, that you're considering for administration of this program as well. Paul doesn't fall back to the same. I will use that process, I will not call the, uh, non-advertitious sheriff's. It breaks my heart to even think that we have to do that, so I've been underreporting problems because I don't think it's a law enforcement problem. I think it's a problem that first you go to the property, the property, let them fix it first before it comes back. So I really hope you're considering that, and then that can be rolled into bringing the program. Again, uh, I sincerely appreciate your diligence and thoughtfulness and listening to those of us who are being impacted by these commercial enterprises. So to each of you and to the staff, thank you very much.
Oh, thanks for, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Anybody else? You should have your five minutes.
I, as I always appreciate you guys, I put in big comments.
Um, all right. Oh, does anyone on mine wanna make a?
There's three. Nothing I could bring on to do.
All right, well, technology, it's great my work, since it's reasonable. All right, so we're looking at our insurance just for stuff. In the past, I don't think this has come to the board, but Steve would like us to say a quick look at it, just so we know what we're spending on here.
Yeah, I think it's good anyway.
Yeah, no, I think, I'm very glad you had, I was thinking. Yeah, I'm curious.
For you to candidate to it in some thousand dollars, so obviously. What could you go, whether it's you have, or what the cost is gonna be. Um, just, uh, to be aware that the, uh, premium increase for two thousand twenty six was five point four percent, it increases over two thousand and five. Pretty small, considering, uh, what other insurance you're doing, they're using eight to ten percent, so I think it's reasonable, I think, well, of course, I've been wrong yesterday, seriously, I think. For property casualty, an aspect of it, and the other insurances that we have, uh, I think they're as good as they can be. Um, and I think that we benefit in a period, um, I think that, um, the educational part of it, but they, they've got more resources than maybe we're utilizing to the best of our power. Um, bigger towns use them a lot, they do a lot of educational stuff. Of course, tend to know the now executive director, general counsel. A lot, they're really involved, and they, and on the legal end, I think they're just talk knowledge. And say, a lot of communities, so I would suggest we recommend to improve this, it'll authorize me to sign.
Does anyone have any questions on it? Yeah, I mean, well, I will motion that we approve, especially if they'll, or, yeah, approve.
I'll set in.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then we're looking at, uh, actually. Exxon?
So.
Exxon, is that a good?
Right.
We do.
Uh, and from my understanding, it's body cams for the.
Correct.
Police department, um, does anyone have any questions on that, I think that's fair. Again, I'm glad we brought a bill in front of the board, but I think it's pretty important. Sounds like there's a agreement too, a service agreement. Um, have we used this service before, is this a renewal or is this, is this a new?
This is a new vendor.
New.
We're swapping now, we've got a lot of technical issues and other problems. Uh, the equipment that we currently have too is, uh, being phased out anyway, instead of re-upping with this vendor and continuing down this road that's been rough with them anyway. Exxon's kind of an industry standard, it is, um, a company I've used before with other agencies, straightforward, and it's got a lot of room to grow too. They're, they're kind of the industry standard with all the different technologies, so if we ever want to grow, we can with them. And it's, it's basically kind of a swap out, I think, as far as the numbers are concerned and money, just we're gonna have better service, better reliability and everything for about the same price.
And the contract's five years.
Yeah, I think it's pretty standard. Cause yeah, the one that's ending now is a five year contract as well.
Does that include upgrade of equipment?
Yeah, there's a refresh built into that, uh, where you get new equipment sent to you like halfway through the contract and stuff. I, I'm excited to go in this direction.
Yeah, I think it makes your job easier, it's kind of a no brainer, especially if it's not really, it's swap out, right? I'll make, I'll make a much different agreement.
The motion is that a motion will authorize me to be able to sign any documents. Second.
Head second.
Head second.
All right, all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. All right, now we're looking at the, uh, timeline and hiring process and approving the timeline.
Yeah, the first thing, well, and I spoke to this at the last meeting. For certain state statute, there are certain things to have to do before, um, then, this was the thing for the manager, the, the first with the, uh, the approval of job description. We all got in there during the last session of the last meeting, so, um, this is unchanged from what we discussed the other day, I think it's consistent with, um, what it needs to be. And very similar to managing job descriptions that I've read in extensive positions, so my recommendation would be for the board to go and approve the job description that was presented.
I'll make the, the. So.
As I made the motion, you.
I made it.
Oh, you made it.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll set it in.
Yeah.
Oh.
Good job, Steve.
Very appreciated.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right.
Okay, but that's, uh, the number, two bodies, we were. Uh, it is the approval of not only the hiring process, which, uh, what, what Doug tried to lay out is accurate and as possible, but also the hiring timeline. So if any applicant or anybody actually in position is very aware of what's gonna happen and what is gonna happen. So y'all can basically just approve the hiring timeline and that patient process as outlined, we listen and brand, we can before.
I'll make a motion to approve the timeline.
I'd like that. All those in favor? Aye, and I.
They asked me, they asked me these questions.
On that, sir, um, if you run into issues with the timeline, you just bring it up on the meeting, we don't meet our goals, we don't have.
Well, we would, um, similar to like in Georgetown, we went through the first, you know, and, and I got to the point where I received applicants, I was not. Enamored with the fact that I rolled, received two and I didn't like the quality, so there at the very next meeting, we came back, we adopted the hiring. Process stays the same, it's just a rise in your timeline, and you may do it, even if you get to the end where you have finalists, you may select a finalist that just could say, nope. Not happy with it, even after they've gone through the entire process, so, um, you know, it, this is, this is a delicate thing to.
Does the applicant, does the posting of the job, does it just go to search app or does it go?
It goes to CML and it goes to ICMA, it's targeted to the people that we're trying to target, it's been proven to be, uh, very, the most effective way. Uh, Georgetown broke out of the box and tried to advertise, you know, surrounding states, received absolutely no evidence from those. We also did the same thing at Holiday Grove, we advertised with the plants, it's, uh, mistletoe in, in Kansas.
So if somebody, let's say, in our community could do the job. But they're not on CML, they wouldn't know the jobs there, correct?
It was necessary, no, and what we found the least productive is advertising with a paper, like we sell, we'll advertise to both the chief and a little bit of.
But let's say somebody from another town.
Yeah.
Heard about it, but they are not heard, like specifically on CML, right?
Yeah.
Could be a fun.
She's a good one.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's not a bad practice, I did to talk to the newspaper about putting more, more of them, and that we're hiring.
About the county and that side.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and just to be clear, this isn't just, okay, Joe, well, it's a sense of the rest, there's an application. Using the process and, and, and timelines, or if they have it, um, you know, applicant, yeah, the typical job application, which is what gets included in personnel file, resonate. Um, you know, copies of your degrees and your certificates and this, that and the other, but so, and what, what I found after doing this for a long years. Um, is that it brings a great deal of comfort to the applicant when he arrives about to see in some advertisement, or it's just gonna send an application or a, a letter of interest to. Such and such address by such and such date, they'd like to see the professional structure, but on the other hand, you're not paying them as you would through the nose to pay them for your consulting. So, okay, that's the, so the last component is the job advertisement itself. Uh, we've really, the first paragraph deals with qualifications for the position, which are included in the job description, they all just approved. I guess where we need to nail it is on the salary ranges, this is the current salary range for twenty twenty five. And just for RINs, I looked, you can see where other communities that are currently advertising or have been advertising are sitting at. And I'm comfortable with that salary range at this point in time. The only, the only, uh, fly note on that one is that, uh, Silverthorne is currently advertising, and they're advertising from two twenty to two seventy. Um, I don't think even the bus day, you wanna try to touch that, you know, I don't think it's.
Yeah, Silverthorne has a lot of different stuff.
There are a whole other, it's a whole different. Yeah, and I, I would say, you, you know, I think the top range is, if we're darned, some of this, I don't, you'll never get anybody in eighty four if you do. Um, but I, I, I would suggest you start with this and see where we go. The, the, the thing about it is that, uh, because the state legislature later and the infant list and the chase regulations with regard to applications, we can't ask. Uh, what their current salaries are, so, um, that's always been the telling tale, if they come in and make it three hundred thousand dollars and that fine job, and sort of, let's sniff test on that. But we can figure that out, but, uh, I, I think it's good service, so I wanna make sure you all.
I'm comfortable, I like that. I'm comfortable, if you have a question, was you haven't been in on the interview process?
Yes, sir.
So if you have a applicant that's qualified by your criteria, and they resigned from another position similar, are you allowed to ask the, the reason why they resigned or?
I do during some of final center, so I get pretty, I get pretty automated, and you have to realize, I was fine. And, and by all accounts, I'm reasonable in the job. Um, but yeah, I do, I get in the weeds, and then quite truthfully, um, getting the new age now, we are, we'll tell you. I, I've gotten worse scoop on people, I got somebody that keeps on applying down the Stratmore Hill, water and sewer, and he's a bum. You know, and that's sad, but I can't tell him to his face, I don't have a flag there, just ask the truth. You know, you just gotta, you've gotta know what you're looking for in the world to look at, and the internet, if there, if it's been any positive in the world, it's, it's a great thing not to be a high buck.
You've heard situations where you get someone that may not meet all the criteria that you think has a lot of potential?
Yes, some of it, yes, it like very clearly have continued on, and that's why your job description states that you're some college education, how many years of experience or. You know, relative, the, I mean, yeah, you don't necessarily have to be a city manager, you could be a business manager, you could, you know, I, you have to realize, when I started out, I started out before I could drive. I was reading water meters and patch pop. So, you know, I came from the ground up, and I paid my dues, and people were dumb enough to hire me as a manager along the way, and, and I guess I proved myself out. Um, and so everybody has that same upbringing, so I just don't say no, but you know, there's a lot of people who say, okay, I can spell manager, therefore I can be one. That they'll qualify, and that's the good thing about semifinal centers, because I really get down into the weeds, so the technical aspects of the job, you know, as I. The technical aspects of the job, as I explained to you before, that you guys talk about.
One of the best managers that I worked with in a small town um was a parts expediter. He'd never done municipal um city management, but he had this package of skills. Of managing a large warehouse and. Parts came in as the best manager of the town ever.
Alright, can I, can I ask you a question before we move on? About hiring, anyone else get an email from Eric Khan who lives just up?
Yeah, yeah, and I got it.
Okay, so I responded back.
So you know, it, he wanted the, it was regarding position as an ambassador and code enforcement ambassador. Which I didn't, I didn't think we were advertising, or I don't think he did. So I just sort of mind to see. And I'm guessing you just addressed.
I did, well, I wanted to let him know that we had. But the chief of.
But we're not hiring a code enforcement ambassador at the moment.
Not yet.
Do you need us to approve this?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Awesome.
Anything else? Alright. Uh trustee reports. You got anything from wildfire?
No, they said you'd never get to the board.
Alright. I got nothing.
I'll talk about surfing.
I blew off the last manager's mayor meeting when surfing is dead, so. Oops.
You have a manager there in your behalf.
It doesn't line up with this schedule and that is okay.
I guess I'm gonna ask for something on your other managers.
Well, it works. We got time to turn. You got anything for our phone? Uh staff reports.
Just a couple of things. Obviously, I'm trying to update my task list as much as possible. Um I think maybe you all are aware, and if you're not, the, you know, the town obviously signed five year. Contract for snow plines, but the owner passed away a week and a half ago. And so Jody was nice enough to invite me early and then you did later. Um and so I was on the phone last week late, uh trying to uh. Determine what that meant for us as far as snow plumbing, cause it's getting late in the year. And uh, and I do, after all my years of plumbing, still I don't think anybody wants to be like this. Um but anyway, I have good assurances that that contract will be honored. At least through the spring of twenty twenty six. So I think we're, we're in good shape. I did get a call from uh the investment company. We're we're sending invoices, using blame attack, so that's always good. The the superintendent, Ruben, uh that operates, he was here. He was supposed to go. Got an eight, a text coming over Hoosier this morning that he was gonna try to call me this morning. He did, or he sat. He didn't yet, and I'll reach out and talk to him at some point. If he doesn't call me, just go assume. And and find out what he removed from us. But I think that's a bullet that we dodged. Uh second, um and it's is in the task list is that. You know, John and I have been going back and forth about this before election. I am still seeking someone because I will be able to. If you, I can't take your elections in front of the back. I'm not planning on being a candidate. Uh for a number of reasons. Um but I've been trying to shop around and see if somebody could come in as a consultant basis. In operating election, that's not uncommon. If you remember, you know, the Tiju situation over in Mesa County. Wayne names, you call on screens and around by the folks that I know. But I'll also reach out to the folks that I know, see what their availability is or is that, you know, so. Working through that, should have some pretty good answers. In the next month or so, cause you'll be approving the best name officially in December, cause it should start. In January. The last thing I had was that, well, y'all received my preliminary budget. As rough as it may have been or may not have been. Uh last week on the fifteenth, we need to sit down and talk about some things, mostly like say capital projects. Had a chance to uh do a tour with Casey or Rose Contractors, so I've got a pretty good idea of where. I think the town should go and I'm a lot of cases guy who says that, so that's where we saw a earmark. The capital improvement budget, but I need to, we need to, before we get to final approval, give some of your ideas. As well as discussing personal uh related items and public budgets. And so. Before the November meeting. We need to have a workshop that doesn't probably be too very long, but it's going to down the town.
Would that be the entire board not? Historically, we've done a main financial committee or the finance committee?
Yeah, I just would do the whole board.
Yeah, that's great.
Are you thinking November?
Yes, sir, early November, cause what we meet on the, our, your approval is gonna be on the eighteenth, so. I mean logically.
Steve, I'm down for anything except the first week.
Well, the first week would be plan, commission, although I'm not anticipating any, any need for them. I think that if you, if y'all met on the eleven. Or any massive changes to what I've shown you. I could have the document already to go and in the packets for your consideration on eighteen.
Yeah, would you just have John send out an email to the board as a reminder, a uh, yeah, a meeting invite starting?
So November eleventh, five P M. What are you gonna call this for?
And if, you know, um you guys know this place, I don't, so. There's any information you need from me prior to that, like say key in those capital projects, the general funds really about. Key on capital projects or things that you build, you should be looking at. And worst comes to worst, if you don't get it right, it doesn't make a difference. You gotta be managers gonna come up. Gonna sit down and talk to you about what is you wanna do, and then you can always manage your budget. It's it's not difficult. Key on both capital improvements.
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm. Okay, so we're looking at the eleven to five. That's all I have. So if you have a question, Mark.
I think I'm gonna wait till the chief goes over, so I had one at the end.
Yeah, your turn.
Okay, um I just wanna point out, uh if you guys saw the data from, we had twelve months of data from highway nine crashes. An average of twenty five typically reduced it to fifteen. And we're contributing to the speed limit being reduced by five miles an hour, which is a forty percent reduction. So just happy with that. Just bringing attention to that. Um also thank it, a lot of our officers conducting a lot of proactive trafficking portions. Contributed to that as well. DUI is continuing though to crash, you know, regular basis regardless of what the student says. Um as far as the code, tracking code complaints and stuff like that, we are actively working on that. Uh we're also, I think, the department is handling three of the largest cases they've handled in existence for Blue River. The homicide and two felony assaults. We just started pre-trial court uh yesterday. Um on some of that stuff, so we're also having to balance our priorities as well with the limited resources that we have. But um starting in October, I have been specifically for my police department. Coming up with a tracking system that we share with the town side. Um all the complaints or verified or whatever they are. A way that we can see them all, the transparency aspect and how we can track that path through the town's government. To final disposition and whatever the the board decides to do or the. The, you know, the three strikes and all that. So if we are working on that, um they uh. We 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 have been focused on other things just recently, uh but we will get back to that and we'll keep working on it. I will say though, um I did look at the administrative side or software account that we have now for tracking and notifying owners. And it's not very intuitive to use. So once we verify a complaint and follow through, write a citation or whatever we did on our side, the enforcement side. When it gets to the notification side, um I've just attempted to kind of follow through with some of my own complaints that I've done. Um and it, it gets difficult, it gets complex. And so I think that's something we're gonna. In the town manager, we'll have to talk about later and kind of try to hang it out. Something that's a little more streamlined to just have these things. Be a lot simpler, simplify the whole process. Um as to, you have anything else?
And just a couple of questions, chief. You had said, I, what are your thoughts, cause you were in public system on a future code enforcement officer? You had said you had some ideas about how to enforce the codes, who's gonna take care of that? Do you have any thoughts on that right now?
Well, it's, I personally see this code person more of like an administrator. Process, leaving a lot of it on the police department. I think we're okay doing that, you know, going and addressing whatever it is. Um. We're also rewriting some of the codes that we address a lot. So from our perspective, it's easier to enforce and track. Um so it's just not so ambiguous. And I think someone said earlier. Putting all the codes or the short term rails in one spot where it's easy to find is, cause right now the codes are all kind of broken up all over and it's really hard to. What part of this code are you violating and where do you find it? So kind of putting them all just real simple. If it's a dog thing, we can. All dog stuff or all animal stuff will be in one spot. Like that. So, um. Kind of a hybrid type of code enforcement position is where I see somebody that can really just track and follow up after law enforcement goes out, does their actions. Reports it to the system, to the town, that they just, they do the follow up side. Where they're finding, they're finding the responsible owner, the property manager, whoever it is. Like that's gonna take, I think, a little bit of time. Tracking how many violations. We've got these, uh, you know, if we just are using the calendar year from January to December, like whatever, just kind of building that. And if they do have free time to like go hit the tar or something, maybe swing by. But I I think law enforcement, I think our agency. Can handle most of that.
So just for example, I know that there's like nuisance issues, which I'm sure you would address, like the things like trash. Uh. Things that necessarily police don't, I I mean, like building or 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 things, I mean, how how much of that are the police willing to do? And how much should a code enfor- code enforcement be charging?
Yeah, thanks. So that that's a good point. That's a good division. When it is more administrative, um. The the color, like what color your shed is or how big it is, right? That's what I see this code enforcement person going out and addressing. Um but there is that handful of um trash though, is I think that's a law enforcement, cause we. And I'm I'm actually trying to re-address that too. So. Um if a bear or animal knocks over trash on your own property, even if it's on the right day and you had the right container. But that could technically still be a violation of littering on your own property, because then it tends to blow into other people's property. Also attracts animals, like it's still a nuisance to the community. Um so we're able to take action, cause before we show up and be like, it's not technically a violation. But it was upsetting to the community or the neighborhood. Um it's like trash, noise, lights at night, whatever it is, parking. Still, like, there's, oh, there's still a whole bunch of stuff that is. Public safety, health and welfare of our community that law enforcement is gonna do. There's other stuff that I don't even know about as far as building codes and permits and what you're allowed to do on your construction site. That's gonna be the specialty of the ambassador.
Do you guys kind of work that into the, your plan though?
Yeah.
As far as what you think we should be doing?
Right, right. So kind of coming up, if we get any kind of complaint, just a tracker that kind of just puts it all in there. And it starts directing where it needs to go next. And that's a law enforcement's feeding information in from one side. This code person is looking at that and, you know, finishing it through on their side. So there's a handoff that's smooth, a good transition.
So for example, like John is the clerk, right? So the software is not working well, it's not set up. Would it be good for us to be starting to look into some kind of software that's more user friendly, intuitive? That someone calls into John and says, I got this issue and he can, he can put it here, here and here, and you can take the things you need. Code ambassador can deal with it, the things they need to maybe uh building inspector needs to go do this or that. But should we be looking at some kind of researching software or computer?
Well, I I think we've uh town manager and I've had some discussion. Uh I'll be honest, it could be my ignorance of just using this system. But I have printed instructions and I get lost in the sauce. Uh I mean, it's it's kind of over burdensome too. So if I have an officer that verifies a complaint, maybe. Either wrote a citation summons or a warning, um they should be done with that basically. But now they, in this system, you get assigned, you have to do follow up homework, and you gotta send emails later. It it just, it's, it becomes too much. For a code person, that that's what their job is to monitor that website or whatever, I get it, maybe that's part of it. Um but right now, if the officer writes a ticket and then has to go to the administrative side and get into this website, it just, it becomes too much.
Well, I know you're buried now with these investigations, but it would be good to maybe get on this and under your recommendation, say, okay, here's some software that I've seen. Cause if you can't figure it out, then that's no good.
Right, um I I believe Steve's got some ideas. We just, we haven't had time just recently to address this. But I I think we'll be, we'll be able to come up with a solution here, pretty soon. But it, yeah, we're working on that specifically.
Alright, I really appreciate that.
Can I go back to trash for just one minute? Uh I know that you're rewriting the code or consolidating code. Or however you wanna characterize it, going through the code uh and scrubbing out things that are unnecessary. I know for trash, there are at least two, possibly three, if I remember right, different spots where trash is addressed. And I know that there's one that requires people to have. A build on or an add on to their house to store the cans inside. And I'd like to see that remain so that there are no longer freestanding trash can buffets basically for bears. Out in the middle of people's yards. If everyone else kind of is on board with that. It's already in the code. It well, it's in the code, but if you don't have that, then uh alternatives, you have an animal proof container, which doesn't work anyway. Yeah, they are. So my 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 suggestion will be, and I'm actually writing out the trash code as far as I'm concerned right now, is. If you've got, if you're following all the current code violate their code suggestions, right, for bear proof or whatever. Cause even when you do have the shed, the bear's still tearing down the door and pulling your trash out, right? So these, these solutions aren't necessarily working. Um I still want to have the ability to, and I've seen it with other towns and stuff. We can cite you if that's, if it's appropriate that your trash is out like littered on the ground. Even if you brought your trash can out on trash removal day at the right time in the morning, put it out there. You went in your house, the bear comes out, smashes your trash everywhere, that's technically gonna be a violation. Um the one solution, the only thing I've seen work in our community is the metal bear proof cans. I know some people have them. Um we've got reports, even if bears not getting them around, not getting into them. Uh that is ultimately the solution at a, kind of like to see the town move in that direction. I think Lake Tahoe or somewhere. There's a community that that is the requirement. To have the metal cans. But like if, if you can't lock it up, you can't secure your trash, it's gonna be a violation and you're gonna be responsible for. Properly managing your rubbish on your property. Is the way I'm gonna present it. It'll be up to you guys to adopt it or make corrections to that.
Awesome. I appreciate you going, going out. Thanks a lot, Tom.
I just have one question, Chief, the report at the end, it's kind of buried in here. Uh one of your current administrative focuses is the Explorer Post. Um it's a facility, you're collaborating with Commonwealth Patrol, the resurrection of the program explorers, which is a scouting, rear base program.
Correct. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, what is that?
So. It's eagle scouting, um which you know is then combined to both boys and girls now. Uh scouting does have the career based uh veins of it, so you could do medical staff. You can do whatever you wanted. This is the law enforcement version. It currently was last seen in Summit County back in twenty twenty and then disappeared. Through COVID. Um. The sheriff's office wasn't interested in participating. They were kind of a big parent. Program of this before. Uh so Blue River stepped up along with CSP to kind of be the two entities that are gonna. Get us and we're currently building the program right now. Uh we've got kids already registering, so scouts are registering for this. Uh we're recruiting out of an introduction to criminal justice class out of the high school for the juniors and seniors. We've already got one class scheduled where we're gonna teach Stop the Bleed, which is a tourniquet. Like wound care version was what, one of the classes we have that we're gonna host. I mean, it'll be fun. A lot of other agencies like Dylan, Risky on Silver Throne are all participating. Some of those agencies, you know, have drones and tactical gears and bear pads, armored vehicles and the. The scouts will be. The scouts will be able to get involved with all that and from what I understand. There's a pretty good percentage of, uh, students that become these scouts for explorers that actually take on law enforcement careers later on. So you have to be twenty one, so there's that three year gap usually, but, um, there is a kind of a return on that and industry is hurting for officers at this time. So I think it's a good investment into our future and our community. All right, any other matters?
All right, so I wanted to talk about Dave Allen and Highland Investments. I was, that's what I was gonna bring up, you brought it up, but Dave was a good friend, I was really sorry to see him pass. I just, I do wanna stay, try and stay in front of this issue, and I know Ruben, who's done the snow plow on the crew for many, many years. And I know they're committed to go through, uh, next spring. But I, I'd like, and if they say we're holding the company, I'd, I'd like to hopefully have some conversation with Ruben and his crew. Maybe under Casey's guidance or something that we can keep those guys so they understand their modes.
You know, there, there is an alternative already in the work.
Okay.
No, that never discussed.
Okay, thank you.
That's it, all right. I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Third, third.
All right, I think you guys, you guys. It's called.
You're already so good. Uh, I mean, we have super great. But some of the. There's more activity here. Uh, I heard you. I. Okay. I don't.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll bring it up. That makes me tell you some families.
Yeah. You're right. And I. Before you go.
Where are you? Yes, right.
So you put that.
I mean.
I would title it. He said one of the assistant consoles to the program, we have a bunch of.
Okay.
Whatever.
Yeah.
How do you? You can. I kind of want to. This is not. I'm getting your.
Can you turn off the recording, please?
I'll, I'll mention it to the guys and I'll ask Patrick what he knows about.
Yeah, no, he's.